This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates and to the home news review, The Star-Ledger, and Highland Park planned on January 7th, 2016, and was posted in the bulletin board on Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 2016, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my right and my left. And please, is there a microphone here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Speak loudly.
Yeah, please speak loudly if you come up to ask a question. We have no microphones here. Mr. Gross, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Bill Mittler?
Here.
Councilman Erickson?
Here.
Councilman Fine?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Here.
Councilman George?
Here.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Here.
Borough Administrator?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Here.
Okay, we're going on to item number five, council reports. Councilman Erickson, would you have a report for us?
Yeah, Digital Data Task Force has met again to discuss the possibilities of making information that's collected by the borough more easily accessible by the public, and I think we have made some initial plans that I think will pay off in the long run. We're weeks and months away from coming up with the final plan.
Thank you for working on that. Councilman Walsh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Art Walk was a huge success. I'd like to offer a big thank you to John Marr and Stacy and everyone at Main Street Highland Park who helped make it really come together. For those who couldn't make it, it was a kickoff at Tiger Hearts. We headed over to Over the Moon Toys and down Raritan Ave, back to Pino's. There was a great reception afterwards, musicians from Highland Park playing throughout the night. For those who missed it, Main Street is also pulling together the Arts in the Park Walk that'll be happening this Sunday. The Arts Commission is working to support Rise Up, which will be a music and poetry concert in Highland Park on November 12th. It's a social justice concert which will feature marginalized voices, which fits in line with our message of working to ensure that underrepresented voices are heard within the arts. The Arts Commission is also working on a grant from the Middlesex County Cultural Heritage Commission to do a workshop that we've been running in the fall. We also are doing, gonna be offering a free workshop in November and December for teens and seniors here at the Senior Center that will incorporate lessons on how to work with improvisation and spoken word, and registration for that will be beginning soon. We'll get the final date set. We're also working on pulling together a storytelling night, which will bring together residents to each take a few minutes and tell their story of how they got to Highland Park. We're working on dating venue for this event, but it seems like a really great opportunity for folks to come out and learn about their neighbors and their stories and what brought them here and hopefully bring the community together better. There's also a few art-related events that are going on around the community. Art and Wellness Conference will be happening September 30th from 3:00 to 5:00 at the Crossroads Theater in New Brunswick. October 7th, Somewhere in Time is holding a fashion show at the IM Gallery. On October 15th, RAC's Cultural Center is hosting an eco-art exhibit at Ruthie's Bagel Dish, and that will feature the art of Lisa Bagwell, who makes sculptures from 100% recycled materials. It's free, open to the public. I've actually seen her art displayed at other things. It's really creative and it's amazing what people can do with bottle caps and pen tops and other things to really create beautiful pieces. It's a great piece, folks should certainly come out and see that. And then finally, there'll also be a History of Funk presentation at Pino's on October 15th at 8:00 p.m. That's gonna be brought together by Who's My Neighbor? We had a really great talk with Friel Rios this week. He joined our senior luncheon. Accompanying him was our representative from the county Office of Community Service, who discussed various programs and opportunities available to seniors and our veterans. And speaking of veterans, everyone should save the date for Highland Park's Veterans' Day Parade, which should be held on November 11th. This is an important opportunity to remember and honor our servicemen and women and sacrifices they made for our country. And if folks are interested in being in the parade with a band or a group or something like that, you should contact Andrea. They have a rec department. We do have availability for folks to join into the parade with groups. Soccer and flag football are both underway and going very well. We also have a few other programs that folks can still engage in for athletics. One, and actually before I go to those, I'd like to just, we have the Disability and Allies at the Borough of Highland Park are bringing together our fall fun creative workshop, which will be an afternoon of fun activities that'll address personal adversity through creative arts. It uses song, dance, poetry, and visual arts to create skits about how people with disabilities can overcome some of these challenges. There's also, the municipal band for Highland Park is working to recruit members. Musicians of all ages are encouraged to enter. You do need to be able to read sheet music, but no auditions are necessary. It's open to all ages, so folks are interested in coming and playing with some of their neighbors and getting together at the Highland Park Municipal Band is a great opportunity to do that. And then we also have one of my daughter's favorite Highland Park events of the year is the Halloween Costume Party and Parade Festival, Sunday, October 30th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Highland Park High School. There's music, dancing, there's gonna be a bounce house and crafts and refreshments. There's also prizes for best costumes and giveaways. Folks should certainly come out. Kids of all ages enjoy it. Enjoy going out there as well, so it's great fun for adults. There are Tai Chi classes that are happening this fall that are gonna start October 24th. It's a 10-week session. This is a form of self-defense, but Tai Chi uses gentle movements connecting the mind and body that can help reduce stress and increase flexibility, improve strength and muscle definition. It also has been shown to increase energy, stamina, and agility and help with overall well-being. We have just started men's open basketball, and so it's not too late for folks to join if they'd like to join the pickup games for men's open basketball. It happens once a week on Thursdays from 8:00 to 10:00 p.m. at the Barbell School Gym, so folks can certainly come out for that. We also just started Israeli Dance, which is a 10-week session at the Senior Youth Center. This is a great opportunity for kids to come out and learn about the, not just the dance, but also culture, cultural experiences resembling, with drastic resembling folks from Eastern Europe. It's a great cultural experience as well as an opportunity to get out and meet some of your neighbors. And then volleyball just started. It's not too late to join if you'd like. It's a 10-week program, again, Mondays from 8:00 to 10:00 p.m. at the Barbell School Gym. And finally, one last thing here with fall adult programming. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, fall youth programming. I have the wrong list of events here, sorry. The chess classes are happening once a week for five weeks. Those just started, Thursdays from 5:00 to 6:00. Come out and learn to play. Folks of all skill levels are encouraged to join. The theater program will be starting in October. There's no experience necessary, but this is a really great opportunity to get involved in a fun, creative environment to explore musical and dramatic experiences. This season, they're gonna be doing Beauty and the Beast, and this project's actually sponsored in part by a grant from the Middlesex County Community Development Block Program. And then the flag football team is already started. If you missed it, registration, the time has passed, but you can come out and support the youth that are playing in the flag football program. They play every Sunday afternoon at the high school, so folks should come out and join them for that and cheer on your favorite football teams. They actually were wearing professional NFL jerseys, so you can find your favorite team and root them on. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman George?
Thank you, Mayor. Before I deliver my report, I have a little container of dollar bills here. As you know, Mayor, I'm one of your advocates for the Highland Park Gives a Hoot. Recently, my wife and I were reviewing some prison stats with regard to incarcerated youth, and the gangs are preying on kids that are hungry because, just like other underground terrorists, they're preying on people by saying, "We can give you something you need to keep you safe." So the Highland Park Hoot Program actually has more angles to it than meets the eye. Jackson and I made fresh, hot New Orleans baguettes early in the morning that were sold out by 9:30, and people were just donating because they thought it was such a great idea. And we had just thought of it, like, donated to beforehand, so I won't present the cash because it can't be managed under the Edmonds Program or the local public fiscal act, but I do have a check for $29 to donate to the group which will be raised.
Thank you, Mayor.
With regard to Main Street, Councilman Walsh has indicated that the Art Walk was such a great success. I was very impressed by it. I didn't get to go all of it, but I did tend to loan for some because of other commitments. The Main Street Board meeting is tomorrow night. We'll be discussing some issues, tentatively, my meeting is canceled, so albeit that board meeting, we'll be discussing some of their input on parking, which we'll talk about in a second. The Arts in the Park Conference is going well. There are only a few tables left, or there always are, generally down towards the North End, but that's going well. The Taste of Highland Park is something new. It's in the plans. It's tentatively planned for October 9th on North Fourth at first half a block for the restaurants in town to bring out their wares and demonstrate them. I've recruited a couple more, so I think it's a nice beginning. These tastes of such and such a town have been fairly successful in a lot of towns and it brings people out. It should be really good. With regard to the parking study group, at our next meeting, we will be continuing with the implementation of a project that we came up with at our last meeting, which is a parking utilization study. We haven't invented those. They've been around for 20 years, and municipalities pay an average of $50,000 to $100,000 to a parking consultant to do it. But based upon the four or five hundred pages of material that we studied, we came up with an method of using smartphones and videoing a trip down the street and then transferring license plates at three or four different times a day for each spot onto a grid, and you can actually determine what these experts do, which is what is the turnover on the street? Does somebody park there all day? Does the particular block between X and Y Avenue stay parked up? The next space down is usually vacant half the time. And those studies are actually used to make a determination as to how parking should be regulated. I went in with Lieutenant Patachela earlier this week. We actually determined that we can even use police vehicles to run. We did the entire town in the side streets in less than 15 hours. We have some volunteers and we have some interns over there working on the project as well over a couple of weeks to try and get, for the first time, a real utilization of space at different times during the week and at different times during the day. With regard to redevelopment, the main focus in redevelopment lately has been its cooperation with the other participating groups with the planning of the Borough Square Art Center, and the chair, the chairperson of that is the liaison person. We're going to talk tonight about, further about the DCA agreement on that. The zoning board has a new attorney. It was appointed last night as a result of the interview, so they'll be meeting next week with an application. The planning board, we had an informal discussion with the members who were there at the meeting last Thursday with regard to the area need of rehabilitation designation, and we will discuss more tonight. It was a positive meeting. We reviewed the capital improvement task report plans that relates to some of the criteria for that. Had a very spirited discussion, and that tentatively would be on the agenda depending on council action for October 13th. I'd like to congratulate all the members of town and the project cooperators for the art sale. It seemed to be a little bit smaller this year because I think we're running out of illegal antiques, but it was very successful. We did very well. I used the opportunity to drive around in an old antique and visit people who were selling and see how they're doing and how they enjoy the sale, and just to see the people on the street is really a pleasure. And I'd like to thank everybody in town who participated and volunteered their time for that. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Okay, Councilman Fine?
I cannot have words about it, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Just a quick reminder that next month is Fire Prevention Month, and we're gonna be not only turning back our clocks, but also that our fire department will be going out into the schools and informing our youngsters about fire prevention, fire safety. There'll also be fire prevention and fire safety events at the firehouse, so please look out for that one, because you want to keep everyone safe. And also that we'll be having Operation Take Back Medicine Drop. So for persons who have old prescriptions that want to turn them in, October 22nd and 23rd, from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. here at the Senior Center, will be accepted old or expired medication that you wish to turn in. It's best to turn your medication in than to flush them down the toilet. It preserves our fish in our system, so we don't want to get poisoned. So it's best that we turn our medication back in here. So be on the lookout. More information will come out as it pertains to fire prevention, Operation Medicine Drop, and overall keeping us safe. Just want to make a brief mention to the activities that we have seen here in New Jersey and in New York over the past weekend, and that we're coming up on Arts in the Park. We want to keep everyone safe, so our public safety meeting was gonna be this coming Thursday, and we're gonna look at all the safety methods that we can put in place to make sure everyone in town is safe. So hopefully we'll have the eye of the sky. We'll have our incident command center set up, so everyone will be safe. So come on out and enjoy Arts in the Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Welkowitz?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman George, for mentioning the garage sale, thanks to Ballard Park and Century 21, and to Main Street for putting on another successful two days of bargains. And it's also a great opportunity to exercise. My husband and I each clocked about 15,000 steps on Saturday. Not bad.
She's on 19.
As a reminder, though, bulk trash, the north side and Triangle, bulk trash is being picked up tomorrow morning, and the south side bulk trash will be picked up the following Wednesday. And clearly, we cannot pick up bulk trash throughout the entire town on the same day, and Wednesday is that flex day that we have for garbage and recycling pickups. But I want to please remind everybody to be respectful to your neighbors. I've been walking my kids to and from school every day this week, and there's tons of garbage outside still. It's not gonna be picked up on the south side until next week. Please don't leave it there. Thank you, and thank people for their generosity, but please don't leave your items out there for free, because it actually becomes trash at this point. So thank you for that. Moving on, also, I've noticed that because it's been so dry out, leaves are falling earlier. We will not be picking up leaves, though, until later in the fall. I believe it's not until mid-October that we start handing out the leaf bags. So if you haven't, if you're inclined to rake up your leaves, just maybe hold off for a couple weeks, but don't put the leaf bags out now because we won't be picking them up yet. So we'll keep you posted on when the leaf bags are available and the leaf picking starts. Also, beginning this week, work will take place Monday through Friday between the hours of 8:00 and 5:00 p.m., where public service will be working in Highland Park to replace approximately two miles of older gas pipes with new durable plastic and/or coated steel pipe litter, ensuring a continued, safe, clean, and reliable gas system well into the future. I'm gonna emphasize that they will continue service, that there will not be a break in any service to anybody. The new pipes will improve reliability, reduce the possibility of methane leaks, and enable the installation of excess flow valves on service lines. These valves dramatically reduce gas flow if the pipe is damaged. The elevated pressure of the new gas mains will also provide better support for high-efficiency appliances like furnaces and water heaters. And lastly, in Highland Park, as we strive to be more sustainable and to better protect our environment, we want to help our residents convert to solar power for their homes or their business buildings. We're proud to have been selected one of three communities to pilot a new program in New Jersey. Through Sustainable Jersey, we're partnering with Energy Sage, an online marketplace and educational resource to help residents list their homes, to find competitive quotes, and answer any questions on solar. Our kickoff will be this weekend at the Arts in the Park. Please look for our table. We'll make sure to meet the Borough table. Thank you.
Okay. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
No report, thank you.
Okay. Borough Attorney?
No report, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. I have just a couple of things. You may notice a new venue for us here tonight. Borough Hall was evacuated earlier today. There was some sort of liquid chemical found in the men's room. It is not toxic or corrosive, but it emitted a very bad odor that permeated the entire building, and so we have relocated our council meeting to this room for this evening. Yes, Councilor?
How does that affect your Borough offices?
Pardon?
Borough offices, will they be open tomorrow morning?
Tomorrow, they'll be open. They will close this afternoon. We had to let the employees go home because of the outbreak. Secondly, as you heard, we have our wonderful Arts in the Park event coming up this weekend. I want to make note additionally, right after Arts in the Park, there will be, we will be participating in a nationwide concert against violence, gun violence, which will be held at the Reform Church, which is right near the Borough Parking Lot on Raritan Avenue between Third and Second Avenues, and I hope everyone will join us at this very important concert. And thank you to Councilman George for his ongoing commitment to helping the children in Highland Park through our Highland Park Gives a Hoot campaign. You too can help with that campaign. There will be members of our Highland Park Gives a Hoot committee with a giant-sized jar to collect any donations, much bigger than that.
And hopefully it holds for us.
To collect any donations that you would like to make to help us primarily keep our young children fed when school is not in session, and to give them some additional programs that they can attend during the summers. And for every $10 donation while the supply lasts, you will get a Highland Park Gives a Hoot t-shirt, which I donated, so don't think that we're paying for these, but your donations will get you a t-shirt. And it's really a nice-looking shirt, I might add.
Madam Mayor, if I may add to that, I just, at the last rec committee meeting, it brought to our attention that there were 10 students who wouldn't have been able to afford to go to summer camp this summer that Highland Park Gives a Hoot made possible for those 10 students in the borough. It's just really, I mean, it's crazy, and it means the world to these kids and their families that need to do that. So thank you for your leadership in this borough.
Well, thank you for mentioning that. We also, just to build on that, we also sent four of our high school students to a summer camp out of town, which was a mentorship, leadership training kind of camp for them as well. And to Councilman George's point, the more we can do to improve self-image and encourage our young people to be involved, the better it will be for them and all of society. This afternoon, Council President Welkowitz and I had the honor of watching as our own IT person here at the borough, Mr. Shane Santa Lucia, was honored and given a medal by the Veterans Alliance. Mr. Santa Lucia works in our main office. He is also, besides being the IT guru that he is for all of us, he is also my liaison to Veterans Affairs. So congratulations to Shane Santa Lucia on this wonderful honor he received today in Bridge border. And then finally, 6:30 a.m. tomorrow morning, please come and walk with me. We are changing the venue of our walk this time to take advantage of the beautiful art in the windows on Raritan Avenue. We will be meeting on the corner of South Adelaide and Raritan and walking through our downtown area so that we can see all the wonderful art on display here in Highland Park. So I will be meeting up with whoever wants to join me tomorrow morning, 6:30 a.m., as long as it's not raining. And that is my report for today. Is there any public discussion? Mr. Gross, we don't have a microphone. We're going to ask you to speak loudly. State your name and address, please.
My name is Herb Gross, and I live in Adelaide Gardens, Highland Park. I hope everyone can hear me. We have been asked by the Veterans Association, members of the American Legion in Edison, VFW Post over in East Brunswick, South Plainfield, and as far as Trenton, Post 1,000. I've been asked by very, by very good members of all these different posts, very good friends of ours, to repeat the telephone number of the benefit that was just passed recently, giving every single member, every veteran, free medical aid. This is absolutely no cost to you at all, and I'll repeat that number. This is your benefit. This is what you were waiting for. This is what we were waiting for for over 50 years. It finally passed, and it's up to you just to call. You don't have to go down to register. Your telephone call will be on computer the minute you call. You will be automatically enrolled. That number again is 866-838-7654. That's for every single veteran in the state of New Jersey, and if there are any veterans and their families passing through Highland Park, maybe on vacation or business, when you get home, all you have to do is just get in touch with your Veterans Association, and you will be automatically enrolled. Just recently, in the state of New Jersey, the bill was signed for affordable housing. The veterans have been watching this very closely. I have been watching it very closely. Over by Roosevelt Center, it's still at the early stages, there will be affordable housing built for veterans. I'll be in touch with every single veteran as soon as, as soon as the housing develops a little closer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public discussion? Okay, so none. Clerk, would you report on the introduction of the Taxi Cab Ordinance Amendment for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
The ordinance amending and supplementing the code of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 49, Taxi Cabs Regarding the Qualifications for the Issuance of Tax licenses, has been introduced in writing by the Public Safety Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
All right, on the consent agenda, may I have a motion to adopt all items number 11 through number 19?
Mayor, would you remove 15, 9-16 to 263 from the consent agenda?
Will this be coming up again, Councilwoman?
Yeah, we need to make a minor amendment. I've spoken to the Borough Attorney.
Can I have a motion to separate Resolution 916263?
So move.
Second. All right. Do I amend?
Just everything else but that.
Okay. All in favor of taking advantage of the beautiful art in the windows on Raritan Avenue? We will be meeting on the corner of South Adelaide and Raritan and walking through our downtown area so that we can see all the wonderful art on display here in Highland Park. So I will be meeting up with whoever wants to join me tomorrow morning, 6:30 a.m., as long as it's not raining. And that is my report for today. Is there any public discussion? Mr. Gross, we don't have a microphone. We're going to ask you to speak loudly. State your name and address, please.
My name is Herb Gross, and I live in Adelaide Gardens, Highland Park. I hope everyone can hear me. We have been asked by the Veterans Association, members of the American Legion in Edison, the VFW Post over in East Brunswick, South Plainfield, and as far as Trenton, Post 1000. I've been asked by very good members of all these different posts, very good friends of ours, to repeat the telephone number of the benefit that was just passed recently, giving every single member, every veteran, free medical aid. This is absolutely no cost to you at all, and I'll repeat that number. This is your benefit. This is what you were waiting for. This is what we were waiting for for over 50 years. It finally passed, and it's up to you just to call. You don't have to go down to register. Your telephone call will be on computer the minute you call. You will be automatically enrolled. That number again is 866-838-7654. That's for every single veteran in the state of New Jersey. And if there are any veterans and their families passing through Highland Park, maybe on vacation or business, when you get home, all you have to do is just get in touch with your Veterans Association, and you will be automatically enrolled. Just recently, in the state of New Jersey, the bill was signed for affordable housing. The veterans have been watching this very closely. I have been watching it very closely. Over by Roosevelt Center, it's still at the early stages, there will be affordable housing built for veterans. I'll be in touch with every single veteran as soon as the housing develops a little closer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public discussion? Okay, so none. Clerk, would you report on the introduction of the Taxicab Ordinance Amendment for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
The ordinance amending and supplementing the code of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 29 Taxicabs Regarding the Qualifications for the Issuance of Tax License has been introduced in writing by the Public Safety Committee for Consideration of Passage on First Reading by Title.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
All right, on the consent agenda, may I have a motion to adopt all items number 11 through number 19?
Mayor, would you remove 15, 9-16 to 263 from the consent agenda?
Will this be coming up again, Councilwoman?
Yeah, we need to make a minor amendment. I've spoken to the Borough Attorney.
Can I have a motion to separate Resolution 916263?
So move.
Second. All right. Do I amend?
Just everything else but that.
Okay. All in favor of tabling that resolution?
That's not a table. The mayor's sister will move from consent to consider separately.
Thank you. All in favor?
All.
Okay. Modifying the request for a motion to adopt consent items 11 through 14 and then 16 through 18. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mayor, can we take up 9-16 to 263 at this time? Can we take up consent agenda number 15, that's 9-16 to 263 at this time?
Okay.
I just spoke with the Borough Attorney this afternoon. There's a minor amendment to the fourth whereas. It says the Borough Engineers has prepared a memorandum. It's actually discussed at the planning board on Thursday. Study of the factors that go into the decision for area rehabilitation were actually put forth in the Capital Improvement Task Force final report, which we distributed at that meeting. So I'd like to amend, whereas the Borough Engineers prepared a memorandum, the engineers memorandum to the Borough Highland Park Capital Improvement Task Force has prepared a final report attached to this exhibit. That was the only correction. That and to also make sure that the public knows that there'll be presentation of the area needed rehabilitation at the Arts in the Park, and also a special presentation on September 27th.
Okay, so Councilwoman George, are you asking for the council to vote on this resolution with that change?
I would so move.
Okay. All right. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject the Chapter 159 Municipal Alliance?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We did that already.
You can't do that.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I need a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Councilwoman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, I am appointing Nicole Wines to the Arts Commission. May I have a motion to confirm?
Motion to confirm?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Councilwoman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Yes.
Okay? Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Any public discussion? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned.